We'll move on to agenda items. So, agenda item apologies for absence declarations for substitute members.
There's a full complement of members, eight all attending and no substitutes, madam. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item two, disclosure of interests. To deal with any disclosures by members of any disclosure for pecuniary interests and interests other than pecuniary interests as defined under the C4 Town Council Code of Conduct and Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. Any one? No?
Chair?
That's a law.
Yes, in regards to Northway, I visited the property up in the back garden and supports the residents. But it's not a vote in action, it's actually on the agenda, but I just thought to mention that.
Okay, thank you councillor Lord, but you know, it's not an item we're...
Yeah, but just thought I'd mention this, of course. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Item three, public participation. To deal with any questions or representations from members of the public in accordance with relevant legislation and C4 Town Council policy. In accordance with Town Council policy, members of the public wishing to speak on individual planning applications may do so immediately before each planning application. Any members of the public like to comment at this stage? No? So, we move on to agenda item four, planning applications. Planning applications received in the week commencing Monday the 1st of February. LW stroke 2-0 stroke 0850, 37 Stafford Road. Installation of two external extractor units retrospective and three new external extractor units at the rear of Beachwood Bets. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open it to the committee. Who would like to lead on this one? Councillor Honeyman?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm happy as long as they're used in working hours which they are, and I noticed that the extractors are near the windows anyway, so I'm quite happy with the situation, so I'd propose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that find a second there? Councillor Borman, do you wish to speak on it? Any other comments? So, can I have a raise of hands to support in this application, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven in favour.
And those against? Those abstaining?
That's carried Nemcon, seven votes to nil, supported.
LW stroke 2-1 stroke 0010, 50 Chitchester Road. Direction of a rear conservatory, direction of steps from existing rear decking to garden. Conversion and extension of existing garages to create a gramian ex. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. When I was looking at the plans, I couldn't see any for the garage conversion. I don't know whether it was just me missing it, but I couldn't actually see the plans, but for the additional bits, I was quite happy with.
Thank you very much. Councillor Meek?
I think the garage conversion is in the basement. I seem to think, and to me, it's rather like what we looked at the other week, where we considered that the garage conversion was going to make a flat that was tiny. It looks to me like this is far too small, but I think there are people who are probably better qualified to say that than me, but to me, it looks terribly small.
Yeah, just a comment.
I'll have councillor Honeyman first, and then I'll come back to you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay, just following on the two comments, yes, the... Basically, as councillor Meek was saying, it's possibly similar to when we did about three weeks ago. But if it is a small garage, I mean, a granny flat can mean, it doesn't necessarily mean to say it's got all the fitting completely as a real self-contained flat. Obviously, as long as it's got the usual proviso, but it'll always be linked to the actual main house, it will never be a self-contained property in that respect, so I'd be happy for that, but granted, that could mean, it doesn't mean to say it's got every basic room in there, it could be just like a studio flat effectively. Thank you.
Councillor Argent? Can you unmute yourself, please?
Sorry, it does say garages, not plural, not single.
Thank you for that, councillor Argent. Jeff, would you like to comment on this?
Firstly, the plans aren't that clear, in that the proposed plans are much clearer than the existing plans, but the existing plans seem to have got a sort of blank space on the lower ground in two bits, and those are the two garages. It doesn't actually say garages, so it's not very helpful, but clearly the annex is in the lower ground floor. And just to assist you, yes, it does compare to the previous application we dealt with, I think it was 123 Clementine Avenue, and I heard yesterday from Lewis District Council that that had been approved. It's not in the update report because it was too recent to be put on the update report, but that application was approved, the conversion of the garage, subject to the kind of condition that councillor Honeyman mentioned, of it being tied to the use of the main house, you know, ancillary to the use of the main house. So, that's probably the best response here. I think it is described as an annex, and it seems to be reasonable in size, but not big enough for a single unit. So, as long as it's subservient to the main house and that condition, you know, we request a condition along those lines, I think that's probably the best response. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this application? So, can I have a proposal, please, for either supporting this application, which I think some of you have supported, but with a, you know, shows some concerns? Councillor Argent?
Yes, I will support it, you know, because it's, as I say, they're converting two garages, not one single one.
Thank you. And does that find a second there? Councillor Honeyman? And can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five. Five in support.
And those against?
That's carried five votes to nil, supported. That is subject to the condition regarding it being an annex of servience of the main dwelling. That's okay, yeah.
Thank you. Planning applications received in the week commencing Monday the 8th of February. LW stroke 2-0 stroke 0894, to South Down Corner, Chinkton Road. Demolish existing garage and rebuild to the same footprint. Erection of a single-storey rear extension. Demolish existing front porch and erection of a two-story front extension. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? And I open it to the committee. Councillor Meek?
I would like to say that we shouldn't support this application for various reasons. I think that the front extension looks totally out of character with the rest of the house, and I think totally out of character with the road. I've got no objection to the garage being reconstructed on that particular site. To me, the rear extension looks huge compared to the size of the actual property, and I would say that, I feel that's overdevelopment myself. I think this is quite an iconic road in Seaford, looks right out over the bottom of the golf course, the Seaford Head Estate, and I feel on that corner, it's very noticeable, and I feel that front extension is, well, looks to me to be horrible. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Meek. Does that find a second there? Councillor Borman, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I do agree, the front extension coming out of front is too much for the area, it's overdevelopment, is out of character with the area, so quite happy to second that.
Thank you. Jeff?
Just to comment, just a small additional comment. Yeah, when I looked at it, I thought, yes, this is a large extension, and I measured it with a scale ruler, and it approximately doubles the size of the existing property. So, it's a hundred percent increase in footprint or floor area. That's irrespective of the front extension, that's just looking at the large rear extension, and obviously, the garage is the same. So, just that large rear extension is a ninety to a hundred percent increase, which is quite significant. So, yes, the overdevelopment, that supports the overdevelopment concern, I think.
Yeah. Okay, so, we've got a proposal that we object to this application, as the front extension is out of character to the house and to the road, and the rear extension, which is very large and causes overdevelopment. Is that right? So, can I have a show of hands of objecting to this application, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's unanimous objection, eight votes to nil.
Planning applications received in the week commencing Monday the 15th of February. LW stroke 2-0 stroke 0801, 13 Dill Avenue. Loft conversion to include installation of a rear dormer and hip-to-gable extension. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Edson?
Thank you, Chair. When I was looking through this, I made a note, is this in keeping with the area? When I looked on Google Earth, I think we had a very similar one a little while ago on a corner, and I just wondered if this was just a little bit too much. I don't know what the rest of you think about that one. It's a question more than anything.
Right. Anybody else like to comment on this application? Councillor Honeyman?
Yeah, as councillor Borman knows as well, she might want to say something. I shouldn't be talking about councillor Borman. The Hastings Avenue area, which is what this comes under, isn't it? Is that, so they are quite a mixture of sort of different types of properties, and a lot of them have had the various extensions over the years, but in particular, Dill Avenue. Yes, I think this particular one can cope with it in that sense, it's not completely out of character in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that's your proposal, is it, councillor Honeyman?
No, I wanted to see what the others think first, thank you.
Okay, right. Any other comments? Oh, councillor Meek?
Thank you, Chair. I would completely support councillor Edson. Looking on Google Maps at the street scene, all the surrounding bungalows are of that character. I didn't see any that had been extended. Okay, you could say they're all ripe for development, but that sets a precedent that they're all going to get developed, and then the whole nature of the area is going to change, and obviously, that's going to put the prices up in that area, which means that people will be outpriced in being able to afford a small bungalow, which they might want to retire to, whatever it might be. So, I would object to this development, because I think it sets a precedent, and it's out of character with the area personally. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lord?
Yes, thank you, Chair. To me, a loft extension is a loft extension, which would have to have a certain size and affect in the pitch and hips of the properties to allow a habitable room in the roof. And we've got to be careful, because we set a precedent with alone a garage, which is quite small to be a room, and then we say on the other hand, well, if you need a room in the attic, which has got to be a certain size, it's got to affect the actual pitch and of the roof. So, we can't have on one side saying, in actual fact, we allow a garage because it's small, but when you want to do a roof, sorry, a dormer, which allows a certain footprint for a bedroom, we're sort of against it, because we've got to start putting dormer windows in. So, in actual fact, and price and how much a bungalow costs is not a planning factor. We look at it purely and simply as it's a planning factor. And a little couple want to move down to the seafront or wherever in Seaford, they can't afford a bungalow, well, that's not a planning issue, that should be used as a reason for precluding it from going forward or being rejected. So, as far as I'm saying, if it does set a precedent, then so be it, that means families can stay together longer, because when people put a dormer in the attic, they do it for reasons, that they want to keep the family together. You don't do it because we're going to sell it in five years' time, because you won't get your money back. We do it primarily so that members of your family can stay in your property, and let's face it, where do your son and daughter go now? Well, they move into a tattered bed set somewhere with an unscrupulous landlord, or they can go in the dormer in your attic, you know where they want a good internet connection, and they've got their bank of mum and dad's building them out, completely wash and dry and et cetera. So, I intend it to be in favour of dormer conversions, because it's existing footprint, we're using existing materials of existing building, and I think it's just a way forward now, and why we want to start rejecting them, costs and things like that, it's completely immaterial. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So, is that a proposal?
I would accept the loft conversion as it is.
Thank you. Councillor Borman, and then councillor Meek?
Thank you, Chair. I do agree with councillor Honeyman with the fact that not all the properties are the same. Some have got front dormers in them, along that line now, that we put in a few years ago, so, and this is only a rear dormer. They're changing from hip to gable, but just to give them more roof space, but they're not changing roof heights or anything else, and I think the area can take the change to it, so I'm happy to support it as well.
Okay, who's seconding councillor Lord's proposal?
I think councillor Honeyman proposed.
He was asking a question, I was waiting to see what else he would say.
Yeah, no, I'll second it.
Councillor Meek, and then councillor Honeyman?
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to add that I think it does change the visual nature of the property substantially, that was my point. It's not just putting a dormer in the back, to me, it's quite substantial, changing the outlined structure of the building and making it that much more substantial, and if all the houses down that road did exactly the same, you know, I mean, I don't think you need to go into why people are doing it. I mean, if you want to get a bigger house, you sell, and you can get a bigger house somewhere else, you don't have, you always extend, you know. I know you get money that way, but otherwise, you'll end up with those little properties that people can have, you'll end up only with substantial family homes, and then what the people who want a small property do? Sorry, thank you, Chair.
No, thank you, take your point. Councillor Honeyman?
Thank you for letting me come back. Yes, I mean, as you say, I think it's, because it's at the back as opposed to the front, I think that makes it a bit better, and we're talking about the one, we're not talking about completely doubling it, are we? I'm just looking at the plans now, it's... Yeah, it's still fairly substantial, I must admit, but very good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and it's a corner property, isn't it? Yeah. So, we've got a proposal on the table that we support this application by councillor Lord and seconded by councillor Borman. So, have a show of hands in support of this application?
One, two. One, two, three, four. Four in favour.
Those against?
One, two, three. That's supported by four vote. Oh, four all. Four all, so you have a casting vote.
Well, I must admit, I did feel that this, because it's a corner property, I did feel that looking at the bungalow, it looked a little bit lopsided, and I know, I just feel it's... Changes the character of the bungalow, and it's... Sort of, I'm just trying to find the right words for the objection. Out of character, and probably to the street scene. Could it be overdevelopment on the roof space? Because as I say, I felt it was a little bit lopsided.
I think it's similar to one we had a few meetings ago, close to Northway. What is it, Lucretia?
Lucinda.
Leticia, yeah. That, there, I mean, there, there was a long stretch of quite modest bungalows, attractive, quite attractive modest bungalows, and the applicant was wanting to raise the roof level and put in a loft conversion, and we said it would upset the character of the area and make it more difficult to resist similar proposals, which would cumulatively affect, you know, detract from the character of the area. So, you know, I think councillor Meek actually set it out when he spoke, and I think, you know, in these cases, I can see arguments on both sides, because you don't want to, you don't want necessarily to restrict people who want to, need to add to the accommodation because of a growing family, so you shouldn't have to turn around to say to them, well, if you want a bigger house, you should move, you know, there's a certain tolerance there, but some extensions are so significant that they do actually, they do actually change the character of the area, and particularly if, it depends on the significance of the character of the area and the uniformity of the development there, and what it contributes to the street scene. So, I think, I can see arguments on both sides. I think councillor Meek set it out, character of the area is of modest bungalows, none have been extended in this way. This would make it more difficult to resist similar proposals, and would be generally out of character with the rest of the road, or something along those lines.
Yeah.
So, that cover it? Okay.
Yeah, that's lovely. Thank you very much. Moving on to LW stroke 2-1 stroke 0034, 1 Clementine Avenue, single-storey rear extension. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Who would like to lead on this one? Councillor Borman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I can't see any issues with this, it's quite a simple standard, single rear extension, so happy to support it.
Thank you. Does that find a second there? Councillor Edson, would you want to comment on the application? No. Any other comments? And so, can I have a show of hands for supporting this application, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's carried, supported unanimously.
Planning applications received in the week commencing Monday the 22nd of February. LW stroke 2-0 stroke 0875, 37 Fitzgerald Avenue. Erection of a single-storey side extension. That's it. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Councillor Edson?
Thank you, Chair. Previous application by these people were approved by Seaford Town Council. I can't quite remember how that ended up, but, you know, we're kind of revisiting this one, aren't we?
Well, the previous application was for a unit of accommodation in a lower-ground yeah, a studio flat in the lower-ground part at the rear.
Yeah.
Because it's one of these properties, it's three stories at the rear and two at the front, and this may be to compensate the householder for the loss of accommodation from that studio flat being, if you like, carved out of the house at the rear, because this gives us sort of, gives some additional accommodation back and provides a off-street parking place as well at the side, because it's on the junction of Lyons Place and Fitzgerald Avenue.
Any other comments? Can I have, if there's no more comments, can I have a proposal to either we support this application? Councillor Edson? Proposing that we support this application?
Yeah.
Can I have a second there, please? Councillor Borman, any comments? Further comments? No. And can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's carried and supported unanimously.
LW stroke 2-1 stroke 0050, 1 Lexington Drive, first-floor side extension. And we have got a letter of objection on this one, which was circulated to all the committee. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? Open to the committee. Who would like to lead on this one? Councillor Edson, and then councillor Borman?
Chair, this is quite controversial, really. Reading that letter, it would appear that the previous application was allowed for ground floor, but not a first floor, if I'm reading that correctly, and it looks like, you know, we've now got a situation looking where they want a first-floor extension as well, so... Assuming that this letter is correct in what they're saying, then should we not refuse this?
Well, looking at the plans, the letter refers to the side window on the first floor, and on the plan, it does say that the window will be obscured and it will be fixed. So, that means that, you know, you won't be able to, you know, the wing, if it's not one of the full-length windows, but I think as Jeff will probably like.
It's a standard bathroom window where, I think it's fixed up to 1.7 metres, which is about five foot six or seven, and then the top is an opening, like a quarter light, all obscure glazed, so that the bathroom gets ventilation, but you can't see out, you can only see down. Well, you have to be six foot or so to actually see through the window down, so it's a sort of standard way of providing ventilation in a bathroom, but ensuring privacy as well. And the plan, the notation on the plan says, obscure glazed, fixed at 1.7 metres. So, as I say, that seems to resolve the problem that the objector has referred to.
Thank you. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I looked at the plans, and I did what, query the window myself, and then realised it was fixed and obscured, but if you look at the side of property, there is trees in the complainant's garden, back garden, right at the back, so there would be quite a lot of security there from that, but obviously, the window is obscured, so that does actually cover complaints on that as well, so I'm happy to support this application.
Thank you, councillor Borman. Does that find a second there? Councillor Honeyman?
Just a query on the, on that 2008 letter, we're going to refer into that. When he says lack of light, is that sunlight or normal light? There's a difference, isn't there, in planning terms? Or when people use that, is it synonymous, basically? I don't know if anyone else knows the answer to that.
I think, I think it must mean daylight.
Yeah.
Yeah, just ordinary daylight standards. There's a sort of way of measuring it, councillor Law, who now is, it sort of depends on angles and the distance between angles up and down. It's.
Basically, Geoff, what it boils down to, you're quite right. If you've got a north facing elevation in England or in the UK, you can't have any sunlight because the sun's in the solar hemisphere. So it's, it's natural, naturally occurring daylight, not sunlight.
Thank you. So we've got a proposal to support this application from councillor Borman. Uh, does that find a second up? Councillor Eddon? Uh, any other comments? So can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's supported unanimously. Make votes to nil. Thank you.
Uh, LW stroke two, one, stroke zero, zero, one, eight, fifty three Orfiston Road. Loft conversion to include raising ridge height, installation of two by front dormers, two by front roof lights and one by rear dormer with a Juliet balcony. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? So it's open to the committee. Who would like to lead on this one? Councillor Meek?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Subsequent to my objection to the other chalet bungalow, I would support one being converted because it stands between, it's, it's paired with another bungalow. But the whole of the road basically is two-story Victorian or Edwardian properties. And I don't think that it's out of character therefore to raise the roof height and make a two stories in what is really mainly a two-story run of houses. So Chair, I would, I would support this application in this area because I think it complements the area as opposed to detracts from it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Meek. Does that find a second up? Councillor Argent, do you want to speak on this one? Can you unmute yourself, please?
Councillor Meek has spoken for me.
Thank you. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you. Now, I'm total opposite to councillor Meek. I actually supported the previous application on the bungalow, but I don't like this one because there is only two bungalows. If you raise the roof and you're towering over and leaving the bungalow kind of hidden, and it will have lots of light because suddenly it'll be towered over. I think raising the ridge height goes against some of our neighbourhood plan policies. Um, and such, a big rear dormer. And also part of our design statement that we have is saying that there will be no front dormers, and this has front dormers as well. So I really can't support this application and really would ask councillor Meek to rescind his support. And actually, we oppose this application.
Councillor Argent?
The plans are saying that the fronts are two roof lights, not dormers.
No, there is, no, where are we? Two front dormers, councillor Argent, and two front roof lights.
Yes, I see it now, yeah. And two, yeah.
Uh, any, any other, councillor Honeyman?
Thank you, Chair. So I would be more happier if there's a dormer, dormer at the rear of the property as opposed to the front. So I, I, I can't, I can't support that as it stands itself, so.
Okay. I personally can't, can't support this, this application because I feel the two bungalows together in, in the gap between terraced houses. And I just think that they, they, you know, they just lose all their character. And I think the one with all the, you know, raising the roof and with the front dormers and everything will overpower the bungalow which will be left. So I, I'm afraid I can't support this application. But anyway, we've got a proposal on the table from councillor Meek, and seconded by councillor Argent. Uh, councillor Meek, do you want to come back?
Um, thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to rescind my proposal if someone wants to propose to object and I will not support it. But that's, that's, that's fine. I, I don't want to waste time and vote once and then have a, you know, revote or something.
You're sure, I mean, we can put it to the vote.
I don't want to waste time.
Okay. So councillor Argent, are you happy of retracting?
Yes, I am, yes, because now I've sort of read it properly.
Okay. So back to councillor Borman. So we've got a proposal and really you're objecting on the, on the bulk of the, on the front dormers, which go against the neighbourhood plan design statement.
Yeah. The front dormers, the, I think, say irrespective of the fact that the, the main character of the road is of pairs of two-story houses, these two bungalows are a sort of a prominent feature that gives some character to the area and that the development proposed would be an overdevelopment of one of those bungalows. The, the front dormers would not be a, a acceptable feature and the, the development would, would overpower or would be too, would be, is bulky and would overpower the, the single bungalow that's left.
Yeah.
That's some, something along those lines and would be contrary to design guidelines.
Right.
They're okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've got notes on all that, so that's fine. Thanks.
Yeah. Are you happy with that, councillor Borman? Okay. So can we put it to the vote to object to this application on those grounds?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven in favour of objection on those grounds.
Those against? Those abstaining. Thank you, councillor Meek.
That's Nemacon, that's objection then on the, the grounds of outline. Thank you.
Thank you. Treeworks applications, TW stroke two, one, stroke zero, 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 five, stroke TPO, nine May Avenue. And we've got T1, T2 and T3, three number horse chestnut reduced and reshaped crowns by 2.5 metres and thin crowns by up to 15% to keep at a reasonable size and maintain shape. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? So open to the committee. Councillor Lord?
Yeah, good idea. Trim them down, keep them alive if they need it. So I'm proposing it.
Thank you. Does that find a second up? Uh, I think councillor Edson, councillor Meek?
Um, I just wanted to comment that we do have a problem with horse chestnut trees. Uh, a lot of them are very diseased at the moment. And I'm just wondering whether we ought to indulge the ones that are healthy. I'm just don't know, I'm not a tree expert, but I don't know whether it's a good idea to cut them back when that might risk getting them, them getting infected with disease. We've got a big problem with horse chestnut disease, weeping bark or something it's called. Uh, I, I just put that comment in, I'm, I'm not an expert, but I just question that. You know, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Meek. But I think yet again, we've got very little information on the, the condition of the trees and what have you. So I think we're gonna have to put it to the discretion of the tree officer.
Yeah.
Uh, councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This is something we could actually feed back to Lewis District with regards to tree applications that, that actually more is given in rather than just like a map and what the trees are and where they're going to cut them. It could, could we actually just suggest that there'd be a bit more evidence and information on it for us to judge?
I, I, I've tried it before a few times. And I think Daniel is quite stretched at the moment because I don't get much feedback from him when I've queried, you know, lack of information. I'll, I'll, I'll bring it up again, but I think, I, I can just get the feeling he's under a bit of pressure, like a lot of the officers in the planning department. Um, but yes, it is a bit annoying when we have to rely. I mean, luckily in these two applications, we've got a reasonable explanation in the actual application itself, but we've got no additional information. And, and taking into account that it's quite easy nowadays to take a few photos and, and how useful that is to have as a, as a committee, to have a few photos of the area. Uh, there is a pity that we've only got these descriptions to rely on. So I will, I will bring it up with him and say, you know, it is difficult to give him proper consideration without additional information. Though, but as I say, I, I haven't had much response in the last few months with other queries that I've raised.
Thank you for that. Uh, councillor Meek and then councillor Lord?
Well, thank you, Chair. I, I, I think that's a really good idea, councillor Borman. I mean, I, I think it's, you know, we, we can judge with houses, giving an opinion about whether something looks out of character or something. But when you're talking about living things like trees, it's an expert's thing. I mean, we're not engineers and we're not structural engineers, so we can't tell how a building ought to be built. But we can look and see what it looks like and make a judgment according to the parameters we've been given. But I think trees, I really think, Jeff, what you were saying was very good. You know, it takes specialists to look at these things. And we hear now so much about particularly large trees being chopped down and people saying, oh, it's in the wrong place, but I'll plant another one. Well, then you plant one that's kind of like, you know, seven years old, but you've cut down a hundred and fifty year old tree. It's not quite the same in environmental terms. So I, I would support councillor Borman's request that we, we get more information, but also we get expert opinion to come and assess the tree. I mean, I know of tree surgeons who really just go and hack trees down, they're not particularly good. And then there are also very good tree surgeons who are very careful about the way they cut trees. It, it seems difficult for us to, to, to give, you know, to make decisions about these things when really it's rather difficult to decide when we don't have the expertise. Thank you.
I think, I think if we were under normal circumstances, I think we probably would have invited Daniel Wynn to sort of do a training session on trees, which we have done in previous administrations. So, which we haven't done, you know, this, this time round as yet. But when he does come, he, he, you know, he's very interesting and, and very informative, isn't he, Geoff? Yep. So maybe when we do get some normality back, you know, we can properly arrange in the evening.
By now, if, if it hadn't been for Covid, he, we, he would have done his standard briefing, which is, as I say, is very useful. But there's a lot of things that have gone by the way in the last year or so.
That's right.
Hmm.
Okay. Uh, so I think we've got a proposal that we support this application, have we? Yeah. And so can I have a show of hands, please?
Three.
Yep. And those against? Those abstaining. One, thank you. So moving on to TW stroke two, one, stroke zero, 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 six, stroke TPO, one Hamsley Lane. Purple maple, one, two, seven, sorry, T23, crown reduced by 30%, leaving 70% of the tree in place. Recommended work by arborist James Smith to maintain the health and wellbeing of the tree. Um, no maintenance work has been carried out on this tree since we have owned the property for the last five years and the tree needs work to reshape and rejuvenate. Variegated maple, T24, also above crown, crown reducing it by 30%, leaving 70% of the tree in place for the same reasons. Any members of the public like to comment on this application? So open to the committee. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you. Well, now we have an arborist giving us the reasons why, and he has the knowledge and the love of trees, so I'm really happy to support this.
Thank you, councillor Borman. Does that second it? Councillor Eddon? Thank you. Any other comments? So can I have a show of hands of supporting this application?
One, two, three, four, five, six. That's unanimously supported.
Thank you. Right. Uh, we move on to agenda item five. And it's the Rainbow Walk. And I can say this has been withdrawn. Geoff, do you want to elaborate on this?
Just, just briefly, it was originally arranged for March, a, a couple of weeks' time, late March. And a query was raised as to whether the road closure was actually required or whether it could take place on the promenade. And but because of restrictions anyway, it's been postponed and this date in June was selected. Again, there's been queries raised as to, as to whether it can take place on the promenade with no closure required because closing road for, I think the, the closure requested for something like one till six on a, on a weekend afternoon. And there's been further discussions with the rotary, representatives of the rotary club who are organising it. And they've agreed to withdraw the application, carry out a risk assessment. And the likely outcome is that it will take place on the promenade and because of existing restrictions will be done in, in small groups rather than as a single procession. Uh, so that it, it, it looks like it will still go ahead at some time in the summer, but won't require a formal road closure and that application's been withdrawn.
Thank you for that. And agenda item six, unauthorised development, one, two, seven, Northway. So the committee is to agree that Lewis District Council should be requested to take control and effective enforcement action in respect of unauthorised development at one, two, seven, Northway.
This is quite a serious case, which has been going on about a year now. Councillor Lord's been involved as Ward member and I'm sure he'll want to contribute to the discussion. It's really a very awkward and serious enforcement matter. Uh, the, the applicant got a consent for a modest extension back in the autumn of 2019, but started work on it just before the lockdown in March 2020. And has, and the work has been far more extensive than the, the boundaries of the, of the actual consent that he got originally. He's really done, he's really sort of let himself go on it, if you like. It's obvious that he had no respect to the approved plans and he's, he's built really what he wanted. And, uh, re- relationships with his neighbours have been very poor because partly because of the, the planning contravention and partly because the nuisance of the fact that he's been carrying out the work himself at all hours through the weekends. And it's been an environmental health matter as well as a planning matter. But because it started at the beginning of the first lockdown, the, the, the inspections, official inspections have been restricted and he's really taken advantage of that to, to just carry on building. He was persuaded in the summer to put a, a, a rectifying application in to regulate what he'd actually done because it was so different to the original approved plans. That was objected to by this committee back in, in the autumn and it was refused by the district council. It was anticipated that he'd appeal against that and that the matter would be resolved through that. It was anticipated that he'd appeal against that and that the matter would be resolved through that appeal. But he had twelve weeks to appeal from the refusal and it appears that he hasn't put an appeal in. So, and he's carried on using and building this thing, this, this extension. His children are playing on this, on a flat roof, uh, directly overlooking the neighbour's garden. Relationship with his neighbour has deteriorated. She's, she's able enough to stand up for herself in this and fight her own case. But she's, she's in difficulties because of the, well, the unneighbourly attitude, if you like, of the, of the, the builder. Uh, Lewis District Council have quite a difficult job in actually framing the enforcement action because, as I said, part of the application has been approved, but it's gone beyond the, the boundaries of that, those, that approval. So it's very difficult to say what should come down and what should be left and et cetera, et cetera. And I, uh, I've been involved um, as a sort of third party. I get copies of correspondence that go between Lewis District Council and the, the objector. And I try to advise her and help where I can. But I think it's got to the stage where I just wanted to, the committee to uh, know what's been going on and suggest that the town council's support, if you like, be lent to the objector to try and uh, put a bit more weight on her case and persuade Lewis District Council to actually take some prompt action. I, having been in, involved uh, as a local authority lawyer in drafting enforcement notices in the past, I know how difficult it can be in this sort of case. It's not straightforward. Because as I say, part of the, of this extension has been approved. But uh, you know, all enforcement problems should be resolvable somehow. And if the committee agree to lend their support as a town council to the objector's case, uh, then I can, um, I, I, it'll give a bit more weight to my involvement on behalf of the objector and to, to try and get some sort of resolution out of this. Okay.
Thank you, uh, Jeff. Uh, councillor Everton?
Yeah, when this came forward last time and councillor Lord um, talked about he'd been up there and had a look and spoken to the neighbour. I went up and had a look as well and it's horrendous. I mean, it's absolutely, it's, it's, they've built another house on the back of their house. Uh, and it isn't just the size of it, it's, it's, I went and stood at the neighbour's house and it's incredibly imposing over their garden and their property. It's not a sort of single story extension that's, they've taken right to the back of their garden. It's huge. It's really imposing over their garden, their property, their views and everything. It's just, I, I was quite astounded at the size of it. It's, it's, you know, it's the same size as their house built on the back. It's, it's just not, it's, it's um, you would be very unhappy if you lived next door to that.
Thank you councillor Everton. Councillor Lord?
Yeah, I'd like to thank, first of all, thank Jeff. But um, I think we should support Jeff in his, give him some more weight to his elbow and actually um, supporting the application of the, 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 the people that live next door. Um, I absolutely agree. It is, the extension, it is massive. Um, from the front, it looks like a normal house, um, which you expect in behind. Um, it is, it's double house inside with a large, single story, flat roof extension as well, which the kids play on. And he's not finished though. He's going to build a, uh, what's it called? A treehouse or something. And the treehouse is about as big as your house, uh, councillor. It's, it's going to be a massive big treehouse there. Um, I think also Jeff, which we, if you want to go down a technical route, I doubt very much if a lot of the building works actually complies with the building regs. Um, like some of the lintels are not quite right. They don't, they're not proper load bearing pads. Um, they've all been rendered over now. There's a mixture of block and brick and goodness knows where else. I doubt there's cavity wall ties in place. I don't know if some of the cavities have been closed as well. So there's uh, technical issues which also uh, to me, needs to be addressed as well on, under the um, the notice which we would propose them to go to. Um, and the, and basically he's got his family coming down to his property from uh, Eastern Europe somewhere, I don't know where, and there could be four or five of the brothers there working morning, noon and night. Um, all living rough in one of the rooms. Um, it's, it's just, it, I'm surprised it's been allowed to go ahead in a civilized country like the UK.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, but if you know what I mean, uh, Jeff, it's just horrendous, you know? And that's what I'm going to say. I think we should support it. Uh, thank you everybody.
I think ti- timing had a lot to do with it. You, you know, building commenced about a year ago and we know what happened a year ago.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So we have got a recommendation uh, before us um, to agree that Lewis District Council to re- um, be requested to take prompt from the effective enforcement action in respect of this unauthorized development at one, two, seven Northway. So uh, can I have a proposal? Councillor Honeyman?
Can I just, just say something? Sorry Chair, because um, obviously that particular area, just a reminder, is predominantly bungalows. So in that respect, we haven't really said that really, have we? Although if you go around the corner of, of Northway, of course it does go into more houses, but that particular part is predominantly um, and, and a reminder was, was that the original proposer was based, uh, I know we've been talking about dormers, it's basically a real dormer, wasn't it? I think that was the original, so that, so it's obviously significantly different to, to what was originally agreed. So, so I just thought, I just throw that in. So I'm happy to, to propose to support, to support Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you. And does that find a second up? Uh, I think councillor Meek was quick off the mark there. Thank you. And uh, can I have a show of hands of um, uh, supporting uh, the recommendation?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's uh, supported unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item seven, South Downs National Park camping and glamping technical advisory note. Uh, to consider a report uh, of the planning officer presented to the committee with the South Downs National Park Authority camping and glamping technical advice note. Uh, no, any comments? Please.
This is just really an information note. It's been sent just to town and parish councils. And there's, it, it, it all seems quite common sense and uh, I don't think there is really any sort of need to add or comment on anything. It's been sent kindly sent by the South Downs Authority to town and parish councils as the ones sort of in the front line of these develop, of these sort of developments. And uh, it all seems quite commonsensical. So it's really just a question of, of thanking the authority for circulating it and supporting it, I think. Unless uh, members have got particular points to raise on it.
Any comments? So uh, you recommended to uh, uh, support the South Downs National Park Authority's camping and glamping technical advice note. And uh, can I have a proposal? Have a second up please? Councillor Edson and seconded by councillor Borman. Is there any comment? Does anybody want to make any comments on this? No? No. Okay, so can I have a show of hands of, of support in this recommendation?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's supported unanimously. Thank you.
On to agenda item eight. Uh, to present the committee with details surrounding Lewis District Council's land availability assessment. And we've got a list for you and I suggest we go through them one by one. So we'll start with the land to the south of Chinkton Way. Uh, I would also like to thank Jeff on his uh, helpful um, notes, uh, to, to help um, members on the, you know, making comments on the uh, on the individual site.
Yeah, the, the one on Chinkton Way is a bit lengthy, but it was a very lengthy assessment. It's quite a significant site, the first one. It's quite a lengthy assessment in the neighbourhood plan supporting statement. It is very, for, for all these sites or for most of them, it's very useful that we have gone through the neighbourhood plan process very recently because it's that process that's really covered assessments of, of, of most of the sites and uh, is quite influential. So uh, it does save a lot of time in going to, into the history and nature of the individual sites. But the, the first one had a lengthy assessment in the neighbourhood plan supporting document. And I've, I've set it out there uh, in quite a bit of detail. And thank, thankfully the other, the notes on the other properties aren't quite so lengthy, so.
Um, when, when um, we have had this um, uh, had an application for this land before us that committee and I think councillor Honeyman uh, was probably um, vice chair at that time as well. And remember it was big of um, resident uh, objection to this application specifically from friends of secret head. And um, and we came up with quite a lot of reasons why um, we should object to the, uh, to any form of development on this land. And bearing in mind that it's still in um, the um, heritage coast. And uh, and is, although it's not in the national park, it is uh, neighbouring property to the national park. And it is a sensitive area. So anybody like to have, make further comments on this uh, piece of land? Councillor Honeyman?
Yeah, I just, just like to re- reiterate, um, Chair, that what, what our planning officer says, you know, with the, with the recent neighbourhood plan, which basically has to be our sort of, for most, most of these um, sites, which the district council wants us to discuss are basically being discussed only, only in recent times ourselves. So that's, I'm sure that's where most of the information and more of the research is on the, each of those sites are. So absolutely, I mean, this particular one is obviously has, is controversial because in a lot of ways, because it's right on that, it's right on that boundary, but it is outside the planning boundary as well. So that's something else to consider.
Okay. So really um, it's up to members if you want this land to go forward or reject it.
Well, it, it's really just feeding information back to the district council. Um, it's not really, I mean, it, it's not really yes or no. It's really uh, uh, an information gathering exercise. So what we, what we're, what I'm suggesting in most cases is that the uh, district council is referred to the assessment in the neighbourhood plan. Uh, most of them are covered by designations or assessments in there. It's a few odd ones that aren't. But basically it's just a question of feeding back to Lewis and the policy officer at Lewis in a very preliminary uh, stage of the, of the next local plan. Uh, important points in the planning history, which only local people would probably be generally aware of. As I say, and it, it does help that the neighbourhood plan process has done this for us within the last two years. So I don't, more, it's not so much a question of approval or not. That will come later. It's just a question of feeding information back. Although I think we can make it quite clear in a lot of cases that we don't approve it, you know, it's just uh, it, it, it's just really just a safe feeding back information.
Thank you. So uh, councillor Meek?
Uh, just to clarify, this is a site that we own, isn't it?
No.
No? Is it not part of our?
No, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's privately owned.
Oh, okay. Thank you Chair.
Any, any other comments? So shall we just say that, you know, to refer to the neighbourhood plan on, on this one, Jeff? You're muted.
Yeah. You could just say that the, the information and the comments in the, in the neighbourhood plan as set out in the, in the briefing note, be um, be sent back to Lewis District Council. And the briefing note could become adopted as part of the minutes, if you wish, to make things clearer to the public. Uh, but perhaps that should have been done in the beginning, but I didn't have the time to do, to do the briefing note before the agenda went out, which is why it was just, it was circulated to members alone. But if you want to, it can be sort of adopted and sent so that it makes more sense of the responses that you, you're, you're likely to make. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. How, how do members feel about that? Are you all in approval of the guest? May I have a show of hands please?
That's okay.
Uh, so a guest works Blatchington Road. Um, there again, that comes under the neighbourhood plan, uh, Dain Valley um, uh, area. Anybody want to make comment on that? No? Uh, East Street Car Park. I think um, there again, we want to retain our um, town parks, um, because of the economics of the town centre. Does anybody want to make any additional, uh, yeah?
Yeah, just to mention, um, the, the original report was sent to all members in advance of the meeting as well as on the agenda. And I did get a comment back from councillor Sylvia Dunn uh, with particular respect to the uh, protection of the car parks, if you like, or the retention of the car parks, which, uh, uh, and also another local resident was mentioned there as well. But in, in respect particularly of East Street Car Park, but that's the feedback I've had from other members of the, of the council.
Thank you. Councillor Edson? You're muted councillor Edson.
Yeah, I would, yeah. I, I did notice that uh, it said registration as a community asset has expired. Is that going to prejudice any protection?
Um, what that means is that, I mean, registration as a community asset means that if there's, if there's any move to sell the land, uh, it has to be offered to the town council or the district council first. Uh, for six months and they have a sort of six months to decide whether they want to buy it. Um, I'm not sure who the owner is of East Street Car Park. It may be Lewis District Council. I don't, I'm not sure. I, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in the registration of it as a community asset. I only saw that it expired in the notes to the neighbourhood plan. It only expired a few months ago. So um, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not an essential. It does sort of help assist the, the retention of it as a car park. But it, it's not a, it's not an essential requirement. It just delays any sale of it pending, pending a, a possible purchase by the authority.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, so um, on to, where was I? Sutton Road Car Park. This is by Bert's Bakery. I'm not quite sure where it, where it is. Um, do you want to make any further comment to what is, you know, in the notes? No? Okay, um, then we've got site one, uh, Landlord of Crown Hill, uh, Offell Road. And you've, any comments on this one? What's already there? No? Uh, and then site two, uh, Landlord of Crown Hill Offell Road. It's um, yeah, sort of further north. Any, any further comments? No? Okay, uh, site of the Beach Comer, Dain Road. Which is now petrally caught.
This is a slightly different one in that it's not covered by the neighbourhood plan. It's got slightly chequered history as well, uh, similar to the, the Buckle properties later on in the, in the list. Um, I, I got this information from Charlie Grimble. I, I got this information from Charlie Grimble of the neighbourhood plan steering group, as well as the planning history, just from various other documents that are around. It, it does appear that, that there was quite a controversy when McCarthy and Stone failed to build the, the block of affordable housing at the time. And in the end, they claimed it was because of a problem with the title, a restrictive covenant, perhaps, that they hadn't taken account of when they purchased the land. It all seemed a bit vague at the time and they, they dealt with their obligation to provide affordable housing by making a payment, which is an acceptable way of, of, of the alternative of actually providing affordable housing, making a commuted some payment to the local authority. And as the land wasn't being used for anything beneficial, they got a temporary permission to use it as car parking. That seems to have run out. We don't know what the legal situation is with regard to the use of the land. But if the title problem has been resolved, and this is something I need to find out through Lewis District Council, then there's no reason why, in principle, it can't be used for a development site because consent was granted eight or nine years ago for that second block of affordable housing, which was never, was never actually, never actually built. So on the face of it, it is a possible small site in a, it's a pretty, a pretty good sustainable location close to the town centre and the seafront. And but as I say, there are doubts about the ownership and whether it can be built on or not. But all we can do as far as the district council is concerned is feed back the recent planning history and, and let them investigate it as to whether it's a, it's a developable site or not. But it has been put forward as a, as a potential site, but we don't know any further details on that.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? No, okay. So that leads us on to the fourth, Surrey Road. And, you know, as Jeff has said, this is one of the green spaces within the neighbourhood plan. So I think that speaks for itself. Unless there's any other comment? Councillor May?
Sorry, Chair, I just, this isn't a comment about that particular thing, but I just wanted to ask Jeff. We were told recently that government guidance now was that because of the huge new requirements in housing, that they weren't going to take much notice of neighbourhood plans anymore. And that therefore they didn't really count for much in the way of restricting development, because they were going to be overridden by new guidance. Is that what the new building assessment that Lewis District are having to do is about? How, what I'm trying to say is how much, how much protection in actual fact does our neighbourhood plan give us? It seems to me that it's now open to question.
Yes, neighbourhood plans are referred to in national policy guidance as, they actually, they carry, they carry full weight in the first two years of, of adoption. And we're, we're just beyond the first year at the moment. But how much weight they carry in, in planning terms, as far as housing developments are concerned, depends on whether the district council has a proper five-year supply of housing rolling forward. It all depends on that. I think as a town council with a recent neighbourhood plan, with a lot of work having gone into it, we should always fly the flag of our neighbourhood plan irrespective of what national guidance says. Because there's always leeway for, I mean, I think we should regard firstly, regard ourselves as a reasonably special case in the, because of the restraints of the national park to the north, the sea to the south, and the fact that, you know, the infrastructure of the town is very much, very much dependent on just one main road going through it. So, you know, we haven't got a lot of scope for new developments around the fringes. It's only really small redevelopments that can be absorbed and only, and not so many of them. So I think we should, we should always support the neighbourhood plan, taking into account the work and the number of years that went into it. But technically, after it's two years old, in about, in just less than a year's time, it, it could be vulnerable to applications for residential development. Should Lewis's housing supply be deficient? And it looks like it will be deficient according to national requirements. So we need to be prepared for sort of aggressive new applications for residential development. We, you know, we might get some, we might not. But when we do, we should, I think we should always uphold the national plan and emphasize the difficulties of, 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 you know, develop, finding development sites in our, in our town. But we need to be prepared for inspectors on appeal perhaps to, to have to take into account this national guidance. And in a way, there's a presumption, there might be a presumption that permission should be granted for residential developments if Lewis haven't got that five-year housing supply, as I said, which is unlikely. We, you know, as a town council, will have to fight that presumption and try and overturn it on the basis that our neighbourhood plan is only a couple of years old and that we have particular restraints which make, which make, you know, absorbing new developments quite difficult. I know every town will argue that all around the country, but I think we have, we have a pretty good case in Seaford taking into account the national park and, and, you know, the other geographical restraints we've got. But we need to be prepared for a fight. But just because the, the, the national guidance says the neighbourhood plan should not carry weight after two years in, if the, if the local, if the district council's housing supply is deficient. Basically, that's putting it briefly. National guidance has a lot more to say about that. But, and I think the fact that, the fact that Lewis, for one reason or another, and I, and I'm not going into the, to the, I don't know the reasons, I can't go into them, have not started the preliminary work on the replacement for the Core Strategy Local Plan, which expires in May. They've only just started preparation for it. And the way the programme is set out, it won't be adopted until mid to late 2023. So you've got, in a way, two years of uncertainty. Now, whose, whose fault is that? I mean, I don't know. It's very difficult, it's been very difficult in the last few years for district councils to actually find the resources to, to put into, you know, the necessary work it takes to get these local plans reviewed and go into all the requirements and the consultations and everything that had to be done. It takes a lot of planning, a lot of resources. And there's usually a bit of slippage, which there is in this case. And that means that there's likely to be a couple of years of uncertainty in between the end of May, when the Core Strategy Local Plan to 2016 for the district expires, and 2023, when hopefully a new one will be adopted. And during that time, we'll probably be subject to the government's new requirement for 780-odd dwellings for the whole district. And the fact that to say that if the district council hasn't got the requisite supply in hand, then, then, you know, it gives, it gives the whip hand to developers applying for residential, you know, for, for new residential developments. But as I say, it doesn't mean that we give up on the neighbourhood plan. We say we've got a, a very good neighbourhood plan that's been recently adopted, that's got public support, which designates particular sites, most of which haven't been taken up. So if somebody tries to, tries their luck in trying to develop a site which is not within the neighbourhood plan, then we argue that, you know, the neighbourhood plan sites should be used first. At least we can argue that. But as I say, it's, it's all a bit uncertain at the moment. I think, I think Adam wants a word, Linda, so.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Chair, for letting me speak. Jeff's absolutely covered it, James, and that was an amazing answer and covered all the points. The only very slight additional point, why I put my hand up when he was covering the neighbourhood plan points, was to be clear, as Jeff has covered already. But the reasons why LDC are doing this is because their local plan is running out. It's time's up. So that's why they have to do this exercise. It's nothing to do with neighbourhood plan at all. So there's nothing about them having any change of attitude towards neighbourhood plans or any changes like that. It's simply a technical thing where their 2016 plan has run out. And so they have to take, or will run out in May, as Jeff said, so they have to take action because of that. And that's why they sent the sites list out. So the neighbourhood plans are red herring in terms of this actual timing of this exercise. Just want to be clear on that as well.
Thank you. Okay, so, right, we were at Surrey Road. Any further comments on Surrey Road? Councillor Edson?
Yeah. This is the piece of land that we had an application from the owners for access a little while ago. And we managed to quote the neighbourhood plan. I think there are, there are lots of reasons why you shouldn't build on there. It's, it's kind of a low lying, likely to be flooded. But of course, you know, it's resisting the current trend to sort of build on every little patch that they can find. And I just wonder if the district council will have their arm up their back with a lot of this sort of stuff. No. Planning officer shaking his head.
Well, I think, I think we're in a good position as far as sites like this is concerned, because it's actually been designated as a green space under the, under the neighbourhood plan. So if developers are going to try it on, then they're going to try it on and on areas which they may not be designated as housing sites in the neighbourhood plan. But they, you know, they're not, they're sort of white sites without any designation. This site's got an actual designation as a local green space. So this site, these sites are pretty safe. You know, so although the owner, the owner's tried his luck on, on numerous occasions and will likely try his luck again. Nothing to stop him, but, you know, it is a designated local green space now, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a safe one.
And a little bit of history, when we've had applications in the past, it's gone to appeal. And it's always been lost on appeal. And one of the main reasons was because of the green buffer zone between the Hawk Estate and Surrey Road Estate. And that's been one of the reasons with all the appeal. So hopefully, you know, that will be safe. So moving on to the Buckle Car Park. So parcels A and B for seven units and then Buckle Lorry Park, parcels A, B and C for 10 units. As you properly remember, this caused quite a lot of controversy at the time when this, it leaves, this, the Buckle Car Park was, you know, put forward for development. So any, any comments on this one? Further comment? I think what's there? Okay, so moving on to sixteen Road, six units.
Yeah, I, I don't, we don't know really why this is in there because it's subject to the current application. But it's, all we can say is, is what the planning situation is up to now, which Lewis should know, should know anyway.
Yeah, yeah. So any further comments? No. Holmes Lodge, seventy two Claremont Road, twelve units. Any comments on that one? And then Florence House, ten units, there again, neighbourhood plan. The neighbourhood plan has actually got twelve units for this one. Any further comments? Station Approach, Dain Road. This is the ten units on this one. This also in the neighbourhood plan, but we've got seven units for that one. In the neighbourhood plan. Any further comments on this one? Land, rear of the road, ten units. As mentioned in the Dain Valley project area. Any further comments? This is a new one, Seaford Health Centre, Dain Road. So any, any comments on this one? No?
Oh, too late.
Sorry? Who wanted to comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that there's a lot of talk about putting the health centre there. I don't know if this can enlighten us on that one. But as an alternative to the Downs Leisure Centre. But that's, that's in the hands of the CCG, I think, at the moment, isn't it? Yeah, let's hope that we can get a medical centre there.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I was just going to say, until we've got confirmation of where we would have a health centre for both surgeries, then can obviously build on that site for housing. So I think that does need to be looked into first of what's going to happen with the health, because that's very important for the town.
Thank you, councillor Borman. Councillor May?
We, thank you, Chair. We presumably, when the Downs Leisure Centre, part of the build was dependent on there being flats made available for sale. Because the sale of the flats are going to partly provide income for the capital investment of the Downs site. So I wonder whether that will be the same situation at the Dain Road site, which isn't nearly so big. So presumably it wouldn't be. Yes.
Thank you, councillor May. Any other comments? No, so moving on to Martin Court, Claremont Road. This site is not being developed at the moment. It's the next one along. You're muted.
Yeah, I originally, I originally thought it was being developed, but it's Windy Gap, Windy Gap is being developed this. But this is potentially a development site. Yeah, because especially with what's been going on around it recently.
Yeah, yeah. Any, any further comments on this site? No. And then, well, Sutton, Sutton Lee's Eborn Road, or there again, this is probably completed now.
Yeah, I don't know why that's in there, but it, it was put forward in the list of sites. So it came to us in the list of sites, but it's been completed. So, and I don't think there's any scope for, for expanding it at all. But anyway, all we can say is it's, it's been completed as far as we're concerned.
Yeah. Okay, so that completes that. We get back to the agenda item. So to agree, comments on the list of sites submitted to be forwarded to Lewis District Council, but can I have a proposal and second up, please? Councillor Borman, second, second up, please. Councillor Edson, and can I have a shout hands of?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So that's unanimous that I, I use the briefing note as a basis for a response to the Lewis District Council for information on each site. That's, that's, and, and the briefing notes incorporated into the minutes in order to let the public know, you know, give public full information as to what, what has gone on and what information is being given. Is that okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so, agenda item nine, an update report. And just to note the report unless there's any comments.
Yeah, we're still getting very few decisions back, which shows that things are going relatively slowly as far as administration's concerned. You know, we're getting eight or so applications on the agenda every three weeks. But for the last few meetings, we've only had two or three decisions. So it indicates there's a bit of a blockage somewhere. But, you know, hopefully that will be sorted out soon. It does seem as decisions are taking maybe three or maybe four months rather than two months to come out. But it's only those two decisions so far in the last few weeks.
Okay, thank you. So any comments? So can I ask the committee to note this report noted? Lovely. Thank you very much. So that concludes the meeting tonight at eight thirty-six.
Could I just, Chair, could I just, sorry, can I just say something? I tried to get in at the end of the Northway comments, but you'd moved on to the next topic. I don't know, could I just tell members that, just to reiterate what Geoff was saying about the development of Northway, exactly the same thing has been going on at Ten Blackington Hill. And I just wanted to report to you that the enforcement officer, Simon Cullen, is looking into the fact that it appears that the building is being built much in advance of the building lines of the plans that were agreed. It's also being built far too high for the plans that were agreed, and the developer has been warned. But this is exactly the same situation as happened in Northway in that the building development started in March, exactly the same time when nobody could enforce and look at the site. Sorry, Geoff, do you want to comment?
Well, I don't want to interrupt, but there are two major enforcement issues. One that you discussed tonight and the one that councillor Meeks just mentioned. And I've had so much correspondence on both, email correspondence. Members are aware of them, obviously, as well, both issues. But in both cases, I wanted to report the latest situation to members and get their formal support, if you like, as you've done with one-two-seven Northway tonight. But because of the number of the reports on this agenda, I was going to do the Ten Blackington Hill one for the next meeting because I didn't have time to do both for this meeting. But it's not something that you do routinely on all enforcement cases in the area. But these two are pretty lengthy, notorious, serious matters where I think we need to lend support to the objectors. So I'll do a brief report on councillor Meeks's matter at the next meeting, if that's okay with the chairman.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, councillor Lee. Okay, so that concludes the meeting at eight thirty-nine.